Good evening. My name is Sandra Fritz. I'm the chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee, and welcome to our first meeting of this school year. It's September 6th. Our meetings are broadcast live on Selco Channels 29 and 329, and they're streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connections website. And I'd like to thank Liz Poplowski, who's helping us tonight from SMC. And as it's become a nice tradition every year, we do have a special opening, and we have our chamber choir from Shrewsbury High School under the direction of Mr. Michael Lappamato, and they're going to start us out with the Star Spangled Banner. Thank you. Mr. Lappamato, do you like to introduce our students tonight?
Thank you so much for having us always to start off your school committee meeting of the year. So I'd just like to introduce the students, going from my right to left. So we have Anshul, Gianna, Michaela, Rebecca, Dia, Arbin, Aditi, and Kira. And in the back row, we have Carter, Way Carter, Callan, Sebastian, Christian, Chase, and Nico.
Wonderful. Thank you. And we love this as a tradition. We've been doing this for a long time now. It's always a great way just to start out our year. So thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is public participation. No one has asked to address the committee this evening. However, if anybody wishes to do so in the future, you can reach us at schoolcommittee@shrewsbury.k12.ma.us. Next is Chairperson and Members' Report. Does anyone have anything this evening? Nothing? Next is Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. Probably what's most top of mind is just an hour and a half or so ago, I did announce that we are going to be on an early release schedule tomorrow, Thursday, September 7th, due to the extreme heat and humidity we've been experiencing. There are certainly times in the past when we've had hot days in September, and our students and staff are troopers, and they make their way through the day. Maybe it's because I'm getting older, but I still don't recall a stretch quite of this hot and humid weather of consecutive days. And unfortunately, four of our schools have, do not have climate control for the majority of the rooms and the classrooms. And given the forecast for tomorrow being in the 90s with an even higher heat index due to the humidity, and because it's not really cooling off a lot overnight, we, you know, we take measures to use our HVAC systems in all of our schools, even those without air conditioning, to sort of flush out and bring in fresh air overnight. But this week, that's not doing a lot of good just because of the circumstances. The bottom line is that I think we're crossing a line tomorrow from something that could be very uncomfortable to what could be unhealthy for students, and especially our youngest students. They process heat differently than we adults do, so that's something we have to pay attention to. But also, for everyone, the conditions by tomorrow afternoon just will not be conducive to being in those non-air-conditioned spaces. I did send out the schedule to all of our families and staff earlier. For those watching, the high school's going to be dismissing, all the schools will dismiss essentially three hours early, like we do on a typical early dismissal day. 11:20 for the high school, our new RISE program in the center of town at 11:30. Oak and Sherwood Middle Schools at noon. Arcade of Four Schools, Beal, Coolidge, Floral Street, Patton, and Spring Street at 12:30. We will not have afternoon preschool sessions, and we will not have any of our afternoon extended school care sessions. Essentially, just for logistical reasons, the entire district needs to sort of follow along and move forward with this early release schedule. Regular lunch will not be served. Students would like to take a lunch with them. There'll be a grab-and-go lunch available for when they're dismissed. And then I did note that, based on instructional time, we're still in a good place. This will count as a school day, so we don't have any issues there. And there may be some after-school or evening activities, potentially high school athletics. This evening, all the athletic practices are moved to the evening because of the heat, and they follow a very specific heat protocol through the MIAA that we pay attention to. So those teams will be communicated with individually about any practices or events tomorrow. But I wish, this was not a decision I needed to make at some point in the not-too-distant future. I hope that all of our schools are climate-controlled, but that's going to take a lot of work and investment on the part of the town. And, you know, just with the unfortunate, really, really hot and humid weather this week, I felt that was the right thing to do for tomorrow. I will wait until tomorrow afternoon to make a decision for Friday. It looks like it's going to be a little less hot on Friday. Hopefully, that forecast holds, and we'll get through with a full day on the last day of the week, because I don't like to cancel or have early releases when we can help it. But again, I felt that, under the circumstances, this is the right decision at this time. So that's our situation for tomorrow. Beyond that, I did want to mention to the committee and those watching that I was very pleased and proud to be at Shrewsbury High School yesterday, was it yesterday afternoon or two afternoons ago? They did have an assembly. This was on, yes, on Tuesday, yesterday afternoon. And was very pleased that Kubra Mohammadi, who is a student who's been with us for a couple of years, who came here from Afghanistan as a refugee, who then last year finished fourth in the nation as far as, you know, speech and debate competition, essentially telling her story. And Mr. Bazilow, the high school principal, asked her to share that with the entire school community, which she did in the fieldhouse with the entire student body and faculty present. It was a remarkable presentation. Her story is quite dramatic. I know it's been covered in the local media as well, essentially her escaping from Afghanistan and having friends and classmates who were unfortunately injured and even killed due to bombings by the Taliban that were targeted at schools educating girls, which I know is hard for us to fathom here, where we have co-education and that's something that is still, it reminded everyone who listened as to the benefits and privileges we have here in terms of access to education for all, which we'll be talking about more as the meeting goes on. But I wanted to thank Kubra for sharing her story, and Mr. Bazilow for inviting her too, and he followed with remarks about the importance of all students being accepted and making sure we have a very inclusive school community at the high school. A great example of both excellence and access for students in terms of Kubra's story, and something we're going to continue to be inspired by. And beyond that, I just want to thank everyone involved with getting the school year off to a great start. I think I've visited the schools last week, and people were in a very positive frame of mind, students and staff alike. You're going to hear a report shortly about the work that the Buildings Department did, and to get things ready in terms of our physical buildings. Staff did a lot of preparation over the summer. I want to thank Mr. Girardi and April Yu and AA Transportation. Overall, we've had a very smooth bus transportation schedule rollout, even with some shifts in times with the later start times this year. And other than the usual beginning-of-the-year delays as kids get used to the new schedules, and new bus drivers do as well, we're in a very good place with our transportation. We'll do a full report on that at your next meeting later this month. But overall, I'm happy to report it was a very successful open to the school year, and we're excited for the months ahead. And that's Superintendent's Report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Our first-time scheduled appointment this evening is the acceptance of a donation for the Boys and Girls Oak Soccer Program. For school committee policy 9/11, gifts of 5,000 or more must be formally accepted by the school committee. And Lexus of Northborough would like to donate $5,500 to Shrewsbury Public Schools in support for the addition of girls soccer and boys soccer athletic programs at Oak Middle School. And we have Dr. Lozot with us here, as well as Lexus of Northborough President, Mr. Mitch Cook, who will provide an update to the committee. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to thank Mitch Cook and Lexus of Northborough for enthusiastically accepting the invitation to give this donation to the Oak Middle School Boys and Girls Soccer Programs. Mitch very quickly said, yes, we would like to help, and here is the donation. And we just know how important it is to offer our students a variety of opportunities, particularly at, well, at all levels, but at the middle level. I know, over the years, including my own children wanting soccer as an opportunity there during 7th and 8th grade, and now we have soccer teams, and we're thrilled. And that could only happen due to the generosity of donors such as Mitch Cook and Northborough Lexus, and I'm very grateful. So Mitch is here. Thank you.
We're thankful for the opportunity. This is our best community as far as our business model is concerned, so for us to pay back makes common sense. It's a privilege for us to be able to do that. And, you know, I find you can't say no to Jane in most cases. You know, she has a way of putting a very soft arm on you. But at any rate, we hope to be able to step up when there are all the times of need and hire the work. That may be the best rendering I've heard of the Star Spangled Banner since I was in the military. It's a long time, so that was a privilege in and of itself also.
Wonderful. Thank you. And thank you for such a generous donation. And as you said, Dr. Lozot, these are programs that we want, and when Dr. Sawyer mentioned it, the summer, we talked about it. And, you know, you were looking into getting, you know, some type of funding for it. So thank you for doing that as well, because I know you have a very full plate. But another thing that came in, so thank you very much. Any other comments or questions?
I just really love to support and echo our thanks and our appreciation in so many different ways. As a committee, we've tried to figure out what are the ways that we can support young people being engaged in things, but there does come a point in time where we have to make some cost-benefit trade-offs, you know, so we can run a bus, but we can't always figure out how to get the coaches there or do all the other stipends. And so that just really just helps put it, stitch it all together. And I will say, Jane, I'm looking forward to my daughter. She's already talking about soccer and has enrolled in the town soccer at the middle school, younger middle school level. And so to know that we have, as we continue to build out opportunities at that middle level, and as we come out of COVID, we just also still, we still know there's a lot of work to do there to kind of have lots of opportunities. So couldn't be more appreciative of the support. So thank you.
Dr. Sawyer, any comments?
Thank you. I do want to not only thank Mr. Cook and Dr. Lozot, and for all the reasons stated, also want to mention that Hallie Burek, who is the principal at Oak Middle School, who's just begun her second year in that role, I charged her when she came on board with looking at how we can develop even more opportunities for student activities at the Oak Middle School community. And this is something that she heard from students, and she presented as a potential option, along with Mr. Jay Costa, our Director of Athletics, who has been focused on trying to develop more athletic programming at the 7th and 8th grade level over time. And we've added several sports over the last few years. And we're very pleased, given the level of interest, and that, and with Ms. Burek's support and Mr. Costa's support. But, you know, one of the issues was startup costs, and this donation will help us with some of those startup costs as well. We'll have to, you know, presuming it's successful, we'll look to bake this into the next year's budget. And, you know, with the startup costs very much offset by this generous donation, it helps us to get it off the ground, and then so we can get into more of that kind of piece without too much of pressure on the budget itself. So it's community members and community businesses and organizations like Lexus of Northborough that help support the work that we do and allow us to do things that perhaps we wouldn't be able to do otherwise, certainly not as easily without their financial support. So thank you very much. Thanks for the comments about the choir as well. We are very proud of them also, and I think they do a terrific job. And again, we're just very grateful on behalf of all the students who will benefit. Thank you.
I feel a great deal of gratitude just seeing how you can put yourself and the children singing. That was perfect. I'm glad that I'm going to run for cover. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now, we do need to vote to accept this, so may have a motion to accept a donation of $5,500 from Lexus of Northborough to Shrewsbury Public Schools to support the addition of girls soccer and boys soccer to the athletic program at Oak Middle School. So moved? Second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda, we are going to have a report and update on our school facility's summer maintenance program. We have Mr. Girardi here, and we also have Mr. Bill Tuttle, who is the Division Manager for Public Buildings. Welcome.
Hi, how are you?
Good. How are you tonight?
Very good, thanks. I think it's going to be a little hectic around here tomorrow, because we are paving this entire project.
Looks good.
In the heat.
In the heat. They are starting early, so hopefully, hopefully they'll, they'll, they'll do just fine. I have faith. Some people don't.
All right. Well, it was a race for us to, who could put their lookers on faster to get to
No one.
I think we have the document pulled up here. Thank you for having us. I'm actually really excited to be up here each year. I really enjoy watching all the great work that our public buildings do over the course of the summer. And this was my first year to have an opportunity to work closely with Bill and his team to, you know, to really support the work that they do over the summertime. Tonight, we'll highlight some of the big-picture items, but what I don't want to lose, and hopefully Bill can speak to, are the day-to-day items that all of our custodians and his team do on top of these big-ticket items, including kind of racing around the summer programs that we offer all year long, all summer long. So I'll put it to Bill, and we'll share some of the big-ticket items and let him speak to the great work that they do.
Okay, so we did have some, some bigger projects during the year. First of all, our, our team is up there on the, on the screen. And we have a great group of supervisors. Ken Goodwin, he is the custodial supervisor. Bob Marshon, he is the maintenance and repair supervisor. That was the job I had before I stepped in 13 months ago here. You have Joel Manzy, he is the plant manager and supervisor at the high school. And John Hamilton is the night custodial supervisor. And John basically is in charge of our contract cleaners that clean the big buildings. We don't clean all of them, but actually, we don't clean one of them. So Parker Road. So those, those contract cleaners are essential to the school operating and keeping the phone calls to a minimum as far as complaints and so on and so forth. So on top of that, we have five maintenance craftsmen, licensed plumber, licensed electrician, a master carpenter, and two maintenance craftsmen who are also swing custodians when, when we have an absence or a vacation, whatever it is. And after that, we have 15 custodians, 13, 12 of it, 12 of which are at the schools. The other three are between here and, and the library and the police department. But so there's 25 of us altogether. And, you know, we, we had some, this, this here up on the screen, Floral Street HVAC renovation was our biggest project. It was a long time coming. Since, since I started two and a half years ago, that's, that's when this thing was, was started. And it was about $323,000 to do this project. And what it, what it covered was, it was a warrant article. I think it was two warrant articles, because we didn't have enough money the first time. The entire administration suite, including the nurse's office and that, that whole side of, of the building, the media center, and room 264, which is like a special ed room next, next to it, and the cafe. And the biggest problem with getting this done was the original units that were in this, in these spaces, that were doing servicing these spaces, were, the building was kind of built around them. So they were set in place at the beginning, so we had to tear ceilings and walls down to get the old units out, and then try to fit units in that actually you could, you could fit and service. But it, as of this point, it is a, it is 100% complete. There is still, still a little building maintenance management that needs to be done on it, but essentially, it's 100% and operating, which is a good thing. This LED project that we did at Oak Auditorium was long-needed. I tried to do it last year, but with the utility costs, the way they sprang up on us over the winter, last winter, I put it off. And we used this year's major buildings account to, to fund this. It was a little over $56,000 to change the 95 lights that, that are in Oak Auditorium. The savings on, on this project is, was estimated at $7,600 a year. So the payback was, you know, roughly seven years. Not, not a bad deal. There, there is another payback. The maintenance crew, before town meetings, would have to go in there, and I'm talking about annual town meeting and special town meeting in the fall, would have to change 40 or 40 to 50 light bulbs. They were Hologen light bulbs, and it took four people approximately two days to do that before each meeting. So we had enough light for, for those town meetings. And that's kind of what we gauge it by, town, town meetings. So there, there's quite a bit more savings there rather than just, just what we're saving on energy. So it's a really good project that's, you know, a sustainable project and, you know, counts towards that. Also, a floral, we did this carpet project. This was third floor. I'm going to say B wing. It was a back wing. This was the last wing of classrooms that we had, had not completed to date. And basically, all the classrooms and that carpeting was original from, I believe it was like 1997 when the school was built. So they're quite old. So all the hallways, all the classrooms have, have been done to this point. And there's just a couple remaining things left to do. The media center, the room next to it, room 230, 264, which is like, I don't know if it's special ed, but it, there's a room, classroom there. There's the teacher's lounge and the music. Okay? And I hope to, and I'm planning on putting capital money into it, hopefully February vacation, and, and at least get the media center done, which is, it's almost $40,000 to do that. But that's what, that is my plan right now. Good thing about the media, media center there, library, whatever we want to call it, all the bookshelves are on wheels. So that's a good thing. So I'll keep you posted with that. Chris, see, see if we can get that done. We did two gym floors over. Floral Street, seems like a lot of floral, but everything was due. The two on the left there, Floral Street, and on the right there, we did the Sherwood Gym, floral over also. Floral, we actually did in-house with Force Account, our own people. And Sherwood, we did with, we used a contractor for that one. And what else we got?
That's what we've highlighted in this, this presentation here.
So just to give you an idea, I wrote, I wrote a couple other things down here. We have foreseen and unforeseen things that happened during the year. And something that people don't see, boiler cleanings in all schools. Every summer, boiler cleaning. That is major buildings, and believe it or not, it's like $45,000 to clean all of them. We had a pothole open up at Patton School. It turned out it wasn't a pothole. It was a $10,000 pothole, just because it was a broken pipe, a broken drain pipe. And that's what it basically ended up. We have a rooftop unit on top of Sherwood. The rooftop units on Sherwood are approaching 21, 22 years old, somewhere in that range. Actually, 10 or 11 years old, somewhere around that range. And it, the coil in this unit failed. We tried to fix it. We diagnosed it. We've tried to fix it, and now we have to buy a new coil for this rooftop unit. And by the time we're done, it's about $24,000, $25,000. Okay, so some of these things come up all, all the time. I like to just have a reserve so we can make do when, when things like that happen.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
I was going to ask. Lindsay?
Yeah, I have sort of a question and more of a comment. I just want to note that, for those who are watching, the incredible partnership that you're sort of seeing at the table between the town, who owns and maintains our buildings, the school department, who has a staff who are running it every day. And I don't think everyone always understands what that, what that has to look like. So even to coordinate February vacation, I'm sure Chris's head started to think like, what programs are happening and what's that going to be like? And so there's so much work there, but that partnership too. And I think it's, it's important for us to acknowledge on that not every municipality structures their finances this way, and this, and this piece of work. And it does take a burden off of the school department and for our need to kind of figure out some of these really important capital. Couldn't talk about a better day about HVAC investments, right? We're all, we all know how important that is, and we're all becoming keenly, keenly aware of it. So, you know, I think it's, as we later on in the agenda talk about, you know, futures of capital and our K to, K to four work, I think it's clearly the department, I think what I'm hearing from you is trying to figure out what are the long-term planning needs, and how do we as a town sort of structure those and make sure that we're attending to the big, big-ticket things that people pay attention to, down to the boiler cleanings, down to the carpet. If I just did the math right, 26 years of carpet in an elementary school is a lot of kids. And so, but that we have to be really thoughtful about how to structure those things so we can bear the expenses, but also so we're planning for them, right? That these, some, these are, some of them are very routine maintenance, and floors need to get done. I'm sure on a cadence and depending on the usage and, and everything else, just like your home, needs that, needs that attention. So I really just appreciate the partnership and the forward thinking that we have to know, you know, both what's this next one year, but where are we going to have to be in five years? Which roof is going to need to get done? And what, what other HVAC work are we going to have to do? And, and then we have to strategize with our partners and town government about how are we going to manage all of those, and how do we, how do we make sure the, the schools, because it's just an incredible partnership. And I don't think everyone appreciates it, but I do, and I know, I speak for all of us, we do. And I hope the rest of the town kind of knows just how much goes in, goes into that day in and day out. Even if today's Facebook was a lot of, a lot of fuss about air conditioning, that they maybe don't appreciate just how complex and hard it is, and what it was when you designed a school 50 years ago, you didn't talk about this. When we designed a high school 25 years ago, we didn't think this was as essential as we're thinking about today, right? So those needs change too. If so. Thank you. I guess is all I'm saying. I wasn't on question at all.
I also, I want to thank our Public Works Department.
Um, I also, I want to thank, um, our public works department for the, all the hard work that goes into our buildings. Just even the day-to-day, our buildings always look so good, um, which is a really nice thing as a parent that goes into the schools, as a community member that goes into, it shows pride in, um, our town and our buildings. But also we have, you know, we've had a few new buildings come, um, within a few years and hopefully major things don't go wrong with them. But, um, we have some older buildings too, where just like with floral, you kind of had to figure out how to make a fix that wasn't super easy. And with some of those older buildings, we kind of have to go with what happened fifty years ago and now try and fix it. Um, and that's not an easy task to do. So I appreciate that, um, and all the hard, hard work and all the schools look really good.
Yeah. Just to add to that, I agree with both my colleagues on that. I, I really want to thank the buildings team and the team of twenty-five that you highlighted at the beginning of the presentation. It really makes a huge difference at the beginning of a school year to walk into, see these facilities, you know, really shine and, and just welcome the students in and, uh, definitely want to make sure that you get the credit you deserve. It's, it's really remarkable. Every year going through this presentation, it's always exciting to see what's been done over the summer and not just the renovations and the, or the, the updates that have been made, but what you, your team does every day for, for our, our schools. We really appreciate it.
I also want to thank you because I, I know when we do things in our own homes, sometimes we start a project and there's more to it. And I think, you know, we want to make sure that we're maintaining our buildings as school buildings, but they're act, these are town buildings. This, these aren't our school buildings. This is a town building. And I echo what my colleague said, our schools are so well-maintained. I know when we were talking about, uh, the high school and looking at space, people were shocked at how old the high school is because it looks pr- practically brand-new when you go into that school.
Yeah, sure.
And, and that's a testament to what your staff does, not only day-to-day, but in that planning to make sure that things are done ahead of time. So our schools can run, our kids can be there and then, you know, education services can be provided. So it, it's a lot to do. Like I said, in my own house, sometimes I go like, oh no, we have to do this project, but we're always on top of stuff as a community. And I think that, um, goes to how well the dollars are spent by this community through public work. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Dr. Sawyer?
Uh, I want to thank Mr. Tuttle, uh, for the, and his team for all the work that they did over the summer and that they do throughout the school year, uh, for all the reasons that, that you all just stated. And, uh, I really am pleased that, uh, Mr. Girardi is, you know, so quickly, uh, started to team and collaborate. That's been our, uh, our culture here as long as I've been in Shrewsbury, that there's a good working relationship, uh, between the buildings, public buildings division and the, and school department. Um, and it's really critical. Uh, I look at that photograph of, of gym floors and, you know, I can smell that. I can smell this. And that, that smells like the beginning of the school year, of the school year. Um, and, uh, you know, the, the buildings are just in terrific shape overall, which, which we really appreciate. It makes a difference. Um, I, I will take some exception because you said Floral Street's quite old. Uh, that's where I started my career in Shrewsbury. Uh, so that, that, it's kind of a commentary on me as well, perhaps. Uh, but, uh, you know, I, I think it was certainly time for those carpets to be replaced and, uh, but, you know, it, it's a, just like the high school, when I've had visitors at Floral Street School from other places and, and they say, when was this school built? Like two thousand five, two thousand ten? I'd say nineteen ninety-seven and they're, and they're, you know, they're blown away that it's still, and, and going back to the late great Ted Coughlin and Lamro Pagano, uh, their, their work architecturally and the quality of what was done there. Um, things that people might not recognize, but we've done it in all of our schools since, like putting tiles along the hallway, uh, because kids walk down the hallway, they drag their fingers along and they, you know, and tiles can get cleaned up really nicely. If that was just, uh, you know, typical wall, and it'd be repainted, you know, that's, and you, and if you walk into some schools that were built differently, they, they start to look their age much quicker than theirs have. And that's something that's a tribute to all the folks who have worked over time on, on these wonderful, uh, capital investments in our community. Um, so thank you to you and your team. We look forward to our continued work together. Um, you know, one, one last thing I'll mention, it's, it's honor, it's one of our, uh, strategic priorities, uh, is around school safety. Um, and there's a variety of, of, uh, smaller projects, some of which we don't really talk about publicly, uh, for, for obvious reasons. But, uh, we are going to be, uh, one of our, our action steps this year is to conduct a, a safety and security audit, to have a third-party expert come in and take a look at all of our school buildings, as well as our procedures, but also our physical building spaces around safety and security. Um, I think they're gonna be happy with a lot of what we have done. We know there's some other things that we still have to do and, uh, we appreciate the cooperation and collaboration, uh, to try to do, you know, we're trying to make incremental progress to be as proactive as we possibly can be, uh, around the safety and security of our students and staff. So again, thank you and appreciate all the hard work.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Chris. Thanks, sir.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we're going to have a report on our homeless students who are now being schooled in Shrewsbury. In May of twenty twenty-three, the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development contacted the town to inform us that there would be temporary placement of families, uh, within the community. Currently we have forty-six students who are from an emergency homeless shelter that are enrolled in our schools across grades K through twelve and ten students who are being transported back to their district of origin. And Dr. Sawyer will provide an update on this.
Okay. Let me just get my own slides up here. All right. And, uh, if you go to the next slide, Mr. Girardi, the, uh, I want to begin just with, you know, a message that we've been talking about since last May when the shelter opened, uh, that I think is important to, to repeat here, which is that, uh, our approach always has been and continues to be that all Shrewsbury Public School students are our students. Um, that's regardless of where they live in our community or how long they've lived here. Whether you're a fourth-generation Shrewsbury, uh, family or, uh, you moved in yesterday, uh, our obligation is to provide the very best public education we possibly can to every student. Uh, and, and certainly, uh, these students, uh, are in situations that are quite challenging and difficult for them as individuals and for their families, uh, which requires, uh, uh, other types of support, which we'll speak about in a moment. Uh, but, you know, our commitment, uh, is no different to them than it is to students who have, who have lived here for, for some number of years. If you go to the next slide, the, uh, just to remind people, we did have an emergency homeless shelter open in May to twenty twenty-three. Uh, and, uh, you know, we experienced this back in, I think it was about two thousand twelve or so. Uh, one thing that's been, uh, different this time, which, which is an improvement, um, is that, uh, there are many more state resources that are being brought to bear to support, uh, these families. Uh, there is actually the, the South Middle Sex Opportunity Council, SMOC, known as SMOC, um, is actually on-site, uh, all weekdays during business hours to provide support and, and help. They coordinate all the food and, and various elements of day-to-day living support for these families. Uh, whereas when we experienced that in two thousand twelve and actually for some shelters that have opened more recently, because the state doesn't have these, any more of these resources to provide, uh, or providers to, to do the work, uh, we're, we're in a much better situation that way. We have a good collaborative relationship with SMOC and, uh, we appreciate that as well as, uh, the, uh, State Department of Housing and Livable Communities, which is their new name. Uh, that's, uh, you know, we, we have every other week, we had one today, a conference call at one o'clock, uh, to just check in on how things are going and what issues there might be. Um, so the, the, the level of support from the state has been very different than what we experienced a number of years ago, and that's been, that's been helpful. Uh, I also would say that the support from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has been much more direct. We actually have a liaison dedicated to this topic who connects with me regularly. Um, and there, uh, we'll talk more about some of the financial support that we're getting, uh, as a result, uh, specifically. Um, our current census is forty-nine students, um, enrolled in our K twelve, uh, grades. That's about eighty families. Uh, there's a, some transition in and out, but it, it's, it's been pretty stable over the last month, month and a half or so. Um, and there, and, you know, the message we're getting from the state is to expect it to be a pretty stable population over the course of this school year. Uh, that remains to be seen, of course. There are certainly families looking to move into permanent housing, uh, but that, that's, uh, circumstantially, there's a significant housing shortages, as you all know, uh, across the state. The, we provided summer programming to as many students as we could over the course of the summer, whether that was our summer English language education program, our summer academy, uh, for students who didn't, uh, uh, need that English, uh, support, uh, our summer enrichment program, which happened in the other half-day opposite those programs, uh, and also our summer kindergarten intro program, uh, to help kids get ready for kindergarten. And that was something, uh, when you see the census come up, that, that's particularly important. Uh, you see on this slide that, uh, we do have, uh, a number of students across the district, fourteen at Beal, nineteen at Floral, five at Sherwood, five at Oak and six at the high school. Uh, the numbers are fluctuated by one or two. Uh, but these are the most recent numbers that I was able to provide. Uh, and, uh, you know, it's, it's more heavily weighted towards younger children, as you can see. Um, if you look at the next slide, uh, you can see across the grades, uh, heavily number of kindergartners, fourteen kindergartners. Uh, other than that, it's two or three kids in a grade level typically, other than grade three having eight and grade four having six. Um, so the overall impact on most grades across the, the system is pretty de minimis, um, in, in terms of the numbers. Uh, certainly at, uh, I'll talk more in a moment about Beal and Floral and kindergarten, but, uh, you know, the biggest impact in terms of resources from the school district is, is that, uh, significant majority of the students, um, are, are not English-speaking. And so we are required by state and federal mandate to provide English language education, uh, to those students to help them learn both conversational English and academic English as rapidly as possible. And we have a terrific department with very talented teachers who do that. Uh, but, uh, that is definitely the, the sort of proportionally the biggest demand, uh, on our, our resources is, is that English instruction that we're mandated to provide. Uh, if you go to the next slide, please. State funding is strong. Uh, there is, there are no services or supports, um, that we're adding that cost dollars that are coming out of local resources. They're all being funded out of these state resources. Um, number one that's listed there is the Homeless Emergency Support Grant. Um, that provides a thousand dollars to a school district for every student in an emergency shelter who enrolls. Uh, and so, you know, currently, uh, the, uh, you know, right now we're estimating about forty-nine thousand, uh, in funds for the forty-nine students we have now. Once a student's enrolled with us, Mr. Girardi and his team sends the information to the state and they ultimately send back a thousand dollars for each student that we have enrolled with us. Um, the idea there is to provide money for startup costs, technology, curriculum materials, things that you might not have enough of based on new enrollment coming into the school district. Um, the second, uh, funding source is, is much more significant, uh, and that is the, uh, the shelter funding, uh, expanded homeless shelter funding program provides one hundred four dollars per student per day, uh, which, uh, you know, comes out to about, um, and off the top of my head, it's like seventeen thousand five hundred dollars or so a year, um, over a hundred and eighty days. Um, that's rough, that's essentially the state average per pupil expenditure, which is more than what we spend per pupil. Uh, some districts is less, but that's the way the state, uh, coordinated this fund. Uh, so for every day that student is enrolled with us, excuse me, we'll receive a hundred and four dollars per day for that student. Uh, that is paid quarterly, um, and that's something that, uh, we are going to be, uh, able to, uh, benefit from. And, you know, we already received one payment for students who were enrolled last May in June, um, and then we'll receive quarterly payments. I think essentially quarterly along the lines of the, uh, the school year quarters, not so much the fiscal year quarters. Um, so, you know, we're, we're again processing those pieces. Um, if a student happened to leave us, they leave the shelter, uh, you know, we would get funding for the hundred and four dollars for each day they were here. Um, and then, you know, so if all students were here all year long, uh, that would come up to about nine hundred thousand dollars, uh, in terms of, uh, what that looks like, uh, in terms of funding. So, um, well, Mr. Girardi, can you speak to this slide? Is that okay in terms of some of the, the, what we've added so far or planning to add and, uh, some of the investments we've made?
Sure. Um, I think this summer, when we were able to bring a lot of these students into our summer programs, we got to learn a lot about them. And what it allowed our teams to do was to do some kind of on-the-fly pre-planning to support these students when they came into school. And we did a lot of, uh, we put a lot of attention to the kindergarten students. We knew that was going to be an area that would be resource-intensive to support our teams and, uh, those students. Um, one position that we felt was critical was, uh, to increase our English language education, um, teachers. And, and this one is, will be housed at Floral Street School. Um, again, that's to meet the state mandates around supporting students whose, uh, first language is not English. Uh, we, we did some modeling of some other districts who took some students in and the town of Concord, uh, hired a homeless family coordinator. Uh, they were a little ahead of us in receiving some homeless students and that was a good model that we felt, uh, would support our families and be a liaison between, uh, the hotel to be a, a voice, uh, to SMOC on a daily basis and to support our families and schools as the students are going to school each day. Um, currently this position was filled last week. We have a wonderful new employee, uh, who's, who's working fifteen hours a week currently, uh, to, to do that work. Um, there is some flexibility there. There's a lot of value to having that point person. Uh, fifteen hours is something that we'll consider if it's enough, right? There's, there's a lot of work to be done there. Um, we provide, uh, we're providing two bilingual, bilingual instructional aides, one at Floral Street School, one at Beal School, uh, primarily in the kindergarten neighborhoods to support, uh, the relationships and building relationships with students who's, who do not speak English, uh, who really benefit from, um, a, uh, a bilingual, the, but the bilingual support from, from adults. Again, that is something that specifically we learned during the summer program. Uh, when students had someone who could speak to them in their language, uh, we found that those relationships became quite strong. Um, even things as far as, you know, different behaviors that we're seeing from students were lessened because they were able to communicate with someone that they felt they trusted. And I think kind of to piggyback on that is two, um, ABA technicians, Applied Behavioral Analysis Technicians. And those are folks who are skilled in supporting students who are communicating through behaviors that are not wanted in schools. Um, so that they, they, they are skilled in kind of redirecting, uh, behaviors that, uh, could be aggressive in nature, that could, um, you know, be dangerous to other students and to be able to kind of shape their behavior, uh, to be a, a real productive part of, of the classroom. So as we start to add things up and there's other like daily costs such as interpreters, um, technology supplies, materials, uh, that we're adding in, that we're keeping track of, our current estimates are around five hundred and seventy thousand dollars, um, as we add them up. Uh, this includes, um, some things that have not happened yet, but yeah, iPad costs that, um, if, if the iPad, if a, a family leaves in the middle of night and we lose a couple of iPads for that family, we're accounting for that in, in some of the planning that we're doing, uh, to make sure that, um, you know, we're doing our due diligence with the funding that we're receiving from the state. So that's, um, that's kind of in a nutshell where, uh, some of the big-ticket items for, um, uh, for supporting these families are. I will say this is a very, um, ever-changing landscape that we're looking at and we are having conversations each day with schools to make sure that they do have the resources they need to support these families.
So, uh, I'll ask Mr. Girardi to speak to this as well because, uh, you know, it, it, it bears mentioning that every year we have students who are homeless. Uh, the population of homeless students in Shrewsbury is, is not generally that significant. This is a much more significant population because of the shelter that was open. Uh, but there are a variety of ways that students and families qualify as being homeless. If a family lost their home in another community and doubled up with a relative here in Shrewsbury, they're technically considered to be homeless. And that's governed under the law known as McKinney-Vento. Um, and one of the elements of that that we've been doing for years and people who have heard our budget presentations and, and some of these in the past, um, is that, uh, under that law, a student who becomes homeless, in order to provide stability for that student as best they can, if they live within a reasonable distance, uh, their, their new place where they're staying is within a reasonable distance, roughly an hour drive, uh, of their current school district, um, they have the, the right, the family has the right to be able to continue to attend that dis- district and be, and be transported back there. Um, and, uh, I'll ask Mr. Girardi to speak to how that cost sharing works and kind of what we're looking at right now because we have ten students at our current shelter, um, who are being transported, who be, who were previously in Massachusetts school districts, became homeless, are at the shelter now, but are being transported back to those districts. So if you could speak to the numbers with that.
Sure. Right. And a lot of credit here to April Yu, our transportation coordinator, and to Felicity Boyver, who is our district social worker. Uh, they do the brunt of the legwork around connecting with, uh, other districts to put a plan into place for those families who are choosing to remain at their school of origin. Um, a, an agreement is made between, uh, between Shrewsbury and that receiving district and transportation is coordinated. April Yu is the one who does tran- uh, coordinate that transportation. What we're noticing is about on average three hundred and nineteen students per day, per student to, uh, that's the, that's Shrewsbury's side of the, of the, um, of the agreement, uh, as we're sending students to, to various, uh, locations. Um, so, you know, what we have budgeted for, because this is not something new and, um, you know, what is new is the, maybe the, the quantity of families that we're having these discussions with, uh, but we've budgeted in this year's, uh, in this year. with, but we've budgeted in this year's, in this year for about eighty-one thousand dollars. And it does look, with the families that we currently have, we're tracking at about that pace. Again, it's, it's always a moving target, and if things stay the same, we'll, we'll land pretty close to what was projected. You know, as things change, we'll, we'll adjust. But again, to Dr. Sawyer's point, whatever money we receive back through the McKinney-Vento will go to the town side, and, you know, those are the conversations that we have each year as we're developing our budget.
So just to wrap up, again, just to remind of the, the key message we began with, I mean, every student that's enrolled in our district is, is, they're our students. We are working hard to provide the supports that they need. I, I do want to mention before we open for questions that the educators, support staff, specialists have been doing an unbelievable job of working to, you know, with these students last spring, who arrived, you know, without any notice, and then over the course of the summer, and then into, into the fall. And certainly, the youngest students in particular is where we're seeing the most challenge. That was to be expected. I was really pleased that Felicity Boivere, our social worker, and Jamie Millett, who's our director of clinical services and mental health, did trainings for both the Floral Street and Beal kindergarten faculty and staff around what to expect from young children who are refugees and who have likely undergone pretty significant trauma in their young lives and are in a formal school setting for the first time, often without knowing the language and what kinds of behaviors you can expect. And, you know, we're, we're seeing some of those pieces, and we know from experience and research that those will, we will work to make sure that those don't continue to happen in the longer term, but, you know, there can be some that can be disruptive, for sure, but because we've brought more staff to bear, and we may need to do that, you know, some additional pieces, but, you know, we are able to manage that in a way that would be very difficult if we didn't have those additional resources. So having that funding from the state has been key, and, you know, it's hard work, but we're committed to doing the best we can for these students as we do for, for all of our students. So with that, we'll turn it back to you and see what questions you might have that we can answer for you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to commend the administration and the staff for the foresight to get the children involved over the summer in these summer programming opportunities. I feel like it's based on this report, what, you know, it's paying off such great benefits in terms of like having the ability to not only have the kids engaged over the summer and learning and, you know, developing relationships, but also to set the table for a successful start to the school year. So I think that was really, had, you know, very good foresight to kind of get, get that going early, so just wanted to.
Thank you.
Lindsay.
Yeah, I'd say a comment and two, two questions if I can, Mr. Girardi's the, or Dr. Sawyer's certainly the. I completely agree with his statement, right? These kids are our kids. I've been incredibly impressed with what the district has done to, to support, to support these kiddos, many of whom have had really different, difficult life experiences. And by and large, Shrewsbury's a pretty stable place, a pretty well-resourced community, all things, all things considered, and our ability to provide some stability. Certainly, we hope we can get, get these kiddos on a, on a little bit better path, but the work and effort it takes to build those relationships with providers and with families and kids in other communities and transportation, I just want to, as, as Ms. Boucher said, just acknowledge and appreciate you and all the staff who are not here, who put in loads of extra time and effort and really stood up. And I, and I know many members of our community outside the public schools and community members are trying to figure out how they can help, right? And so that, it makes me proud to, to live here and to, and to be a part of this community. That said, this is a statewide crisis, and I am also just very appreciative to our colleagues at the state level to acknowledge that through funding. Sometimes we have some tension between the, the local and the state, and this is not one of those places and moments in time, and that's certainly appreciated as we try to kind of all figure out how to, how to manage this going forward. Two questions I, I had, one was about interpreters and one is about transportation, if I can. I know historically, you know, interpreters and when, when you need them and how to get them is always a struggle, right? And, and so they're not, in the course of our day, we have some staff who are, of course, are, are, you know, multilingual, and that's, that's wonderful, but you think about, you know, the pop-up meetings that need to happen because someone's having, having a hard day or curriculum nights and parent-teacher conferences, and I'm just wondering how you're thinking about, you know, we, we know that's an area where we, where we could provide more support. We identified it during strategic planning work last year, that this is an, an area where people have, not huge numbers, but important issue for us before this. And so I wonder what you're thinking about? We've talked at different points about how technology maybe can help, but we know there's a real human connection here too. So can you speak to what you're thinking about? We might want to be building out to really, to really provide that support across frankly every school, right? That's, that is the other challenge here. They're, they're well dispersed, which makes it easy on the one hand, but also a little bit more challenging. So how are we thinking about what we might need going forward?
Sure, and this is a great opportunity to kind of champion the work of Christina Manos and her team. She's been instrumental all summer long.
Most surprised we haven't mentioned her name up until this moment, so glad you did. Yes.
You know, and I, to your point, I think as we're talking about, you know, pulling out the phone and, and tapping away with those families at the hotel, trying to find out how old their child is and what grade they should be going to, and some really specific information, that's really difficult.
Yeah.
So whenever we have the opportunity to have that in-face person, it's been such a, a better experience for our families, and we're getting so much more information out of, that's really useful to us. We had a, we have a, a part-time secretarial assistant who we kind of reshaped her, her role. Her name is Anna Kloon, and I want to say it because she's done a great job of being a point person at the hotel for us. She is bilingual, she speaks Spanish and conversational Portuguese, and to have that type of resource really has been a huge benefit add. What we're seeing at the school level is we're starting to see educators, paraprofessionals who happen to speak Spanish or have a conversational Spanish that they're kind of bubbling to the surface and helping out on a daily basis, on an emergency basis as needed as a student is requiring help, and we don't know how to do it. I know Christina and her team are really working hard for some of the more formal things such as meetings, IEP meetings, planning for curriculum nights and translators. A lot of our staff are volunteering their time, or we're paying our staff, who typically aren't our interpreters, to come in for curriculum nights and to provide those services where they never, that wouldn't be a resource that we would have tapped into elsewhere, otherwise. So a lot of hands-on deck, a lot of tapping into some of our technology resources around some of the phone systems that we use, some of the kind of third-party translator services that we're using. I, I appreciate your point to the curriculum nights. We're planning elementary curriculum nights next Wednesday and Thursday, and the lift that it's taking to provide transportation, to get information into these families' hands, to talk about childcare, and then to have a positive experience with translators on the backend, is a good example of the amount of resources that are required to really support these families the way that we want to.
I guess I would hope that we also maybe use this as an opportunity to think about, we knew this was a challenge before, and like how else could we formalize some of that? Because I, while I appreciate there are sort of can-do attitude and people jumping in and helping a little more informally, there's also opportunities for us to think about as a district, how are we hiring folks who have the skill set where it's not an informal ask, but that we have the right people? And, you know, I've, I've been on the parent side of an IEP process, there's a lot of technical language, a lot of complicated stuff, and I know we're doing our part, but I know it's also, we're somewhat resource-constrained in the market here too, so I think it's important you keep us updated about what you, what you need, and if we, if we have the right resources dedicated to kind of, maybe we, maybe this helps us move that needle a little bit faster than we maybe had planned to, to address. I remember when I learned about all the different languages that communication tool we were using, and I was sort of blown away about what was already here, that, you know, we all can all live in our own little bubbles, and that was new to me. So if I can just pivot, when we have transferred, I'm thinking about the, the grant that we had for earlier, after-school activities and kids were transporting to other districts. Of course, McKinney-Vento says they should go to what their home district, and so I'm not questioning that, but I'm assuming we are required to get them to school and back from school, and yet we know school for kids is often more than that six-hour day, right? And they want to do a drama, or they want to do a soccer program at middle school, and so is that something that we, we have to limit because it's not sort of what's, what's asked of us in the law, or how, how do conversations happen with the local district that is? I'm just curious about that, what that looks like, if you don't mind sharing.
So I think, and to Joe's point, to Dr. Sawyer's point here around they're all of our students, we want to provide them the same experience that all other students have an opportunity to do. Again, heavy lift, resource-intensive. As far as running the late bus, we provide a late bus stop there, that if students are looking for those after-school activities like other students at those grade levels are, that's our goal. We did message to SMOC and the folks over at the hotel that we wanted our students to try out for fall sports, to different activities. There were a few students who were able to try out. What, you know, one thing that we are looking for is a more committed service for providing transportation that we feel is the right level of transportation that our students deserve. That's something that in our conversations at the state level, we've been very vocal about as to them helping us provide those supports. You know, the regular typical transportation of having a bus that runs to and from the hotel would be ideal. We're not finding that's, that's the case right now, and we're looking for alternative measures.
Right.
But that's, that's, that's our thinking, that's where we want to land. We are exploring different volunteer opportunities, different ways to transport students. That's a little bit different than typical, you know, bus transportation that we provide in a way that's a little bit more, I think, manageable and meaningful for those students.
Right. I just, I want to acknowledge both of you and Dr. Sawyer, the, the flexibility that it takes to be nimble when, you know, a big yellow bus isn't going to solve all of our needs, right? Every, every time, and so how do we, how do we think about that? And I think it's important that both we bring it to the statewide delegation, but also I really appreciate your letting, keeping us posted about what the needs are to really say, you want to do this activity? How do we, how do we make it happen? And I know our hearts are in it, I just want to make sure the resources are behind that and that we're dedicating them as appropriately, so thank you, Ms. Boucher.
What else?
I also want to thank you, because I know back in May, it kind of happened quickly. I mean, and I think this district turned it around very quickly in support of these families between the school department and the town. I mean, there was a lot of people making sure that we were being, doing the right things at the right time, and that planning piece, because we've talked about it over the summer, as we got ready for the school year, and what would that mean for our classrooms, for our teachers? So I think, you know, for us as a school committee, and we have a fiduciary responsibility to make sure that we're always looking at the resources and the funding, so we want to be sure we're doing the right things, but as Ms. Heffernan said, we need to be up to date on everything as we look at resources and needs going forward. Things could change, could be less, could be more, we don't know, but I think from the school committee perspective, just making sure we have timely updates on any changes going forward. And I also think we talk about, you know, the monetary piece, but we also need to talk about the non-monetary pieces, especially to our classroom teachers, and depending on what that mix in the classroom can be, it could be a lot of work depending on a student's particular needs. So I think that's a piece we need to always be mindful of as well. My other question is for you, Mr. Girardi, looking forward to the increased paperwork that, or what's happening from your office, because this is new reporting that we must have to be doing. How, how much more work is it for you on top of everything else that you're doing? Because that's another concern, too.
It is. We actually have a meeting tomorrow to really just make sure that we're, that we're coding all the energy that goes into our homeless families into this grant funding. So, so Kim Fitzpatrick, who works in our business office, is responsible for all the components of our grants. So we've established some grant codes, and what we're doing is the energies that, I should say energies, you know, time cards and things that we're purchasing, that making sure that they are coded to that grant. So I think the, you know, the heavy lift was getting that up and running, making sure that those funds were being made available, and then now that we have that in place, being able to draw off of that account as we're identifying resources that we're putting into our homeless families.
But thank you for that, because I know it's, you're new to the job and all this other stuff thrown on top of it, so thank you.
Great learning happened.
I bet it was. And I just want to echo Ms. Heffernan's point about that, especially that communication piece, because we did talk a lot last year as we become more of a diverse community, so maybe this is the opportunity that's coming out of this to make things a little different in our own school system that we haven't had, that might just become every day because we're able to help students and parents right now who really need it, but I think we're going to need these services as we go forward and as we look at next year's budget, what we need to put into that for any communication.
I really appreciate that point, because I, much unlike 2013, I don't think this is a little burst that is going to go away and back to the way life used to be, right? So.
Right.
Doing some bigger picture planning for, you know, for that, I think is a smart move.
Thank you. Dr. Sawyer, any comments or questions?
I just want to, I mean, to, to your point, Mr. Girardi's doing some extra work that wasn't expected, his department is, you know, everyone is, is pitching in to, to make a difference. Christina Manos and the English Language Education Team for sure, the Student Services Team, as I mentioned earlier. Everyone is really, you know, rowing together to, to do what we can to, to make this work as best we can. And I do think that, you know, again, this is an acute situation, but we have, you know, other students, other families who have similar situations that we've always worked with in a variety of ways, quietly behind the scenes, and this is more public, and we thought it was important to report out so people understand, because it's in the news and all those pieces, but I think it does, you know, we are building some hopefully systems that will, you know, regardless of how long this crisis lasts in the state, you know, we will be able to benefit families going forward regardless of their, their status as far as homelessness and, because we are becoming a more diverse community every year, for sure. So appreciate the comments and the questions, and we'll keep the committee updated as the year goes on.
Great, thank you. Okay, next we're going to have a capital planning update. First update will be on the SOI that we submitted for the Shrewsbury High School, that was back in the spring, as well as progress toward establishing the pre-K through grade four capital planning study committee. That was proposed and voted on by the committee also in this past spring. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Girardi and Dr. Sawyer.
Okay, thank you. So there's a couple of pieces we're going to hit on here tonight. I think both pieces go back to the spring when we began the capital planning conversation and started to have conversations related to Limerick and Pagano Associates' report that they prepared for us that Dr. Sawyer will speak to in a moment. A piece that came out of that and a piece that we are excited to, to just provide some updates on is where we are in the statement of interest process with the Shrewsbury High So the message, so we are working with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. This is the, the group who helps manage funds for providing resources to schools, and, you know, coming from Beal School and having worked with them, I think many people in this room and, and listening on the screen really know the, the value and benefit of working with the Massachusetts School Building Authority around supporting the financing and, and project control of school buildings. I'm just going to move forward here. So when we were looking at the Shrewsbury High School, a piece that was, I think, near and dear to the conversation was the enrollment history and projections moving forward. You know, when the school was built, we had one thousand one hundred, one hundred and thirty-five students. We went over design capacity not too long after that. Year twenty, twenty twenty-two, we're looking at eighteen hundred students, and projected over the next eight or so years, that number is not fluctuating very much and is a very important piece in talking about what type of high school that we need to support our So the statement of interest process is we did submit on April fourteenth of this year to MSBA for a Shrewsbury High School expansion project. The MSBA has been working on receiving statements during this time. They released, received sixty-three statements that were submitted during this submittal period, and we were happy to receive a few weeks back that Shrewsbury High School is one of about thirty projects that are moving forward for, for the consideration in a senior So some of our next steps, in October, we have the senior study that will be conducted at the high school. We will be receiving a team of architects from out of state contracted by MSBA to visit and meet with municipal and school officials to examine the school facility, to review the statement of interest, to have conversations about what our current issues are that led to our statement of interest. From there, they'll, they'll spend the fall visiting other projects, doing the same process with those other projects, and around January of 2024, they will review and vote to invite selected districts into the eligibility module, thus kicking off the, the pipeline for, for a project. thus kicking off the, the pipeline for, for a project.
So before we move on to this next piece, just want to reiterate, this is very good news to be, you know, make the cut, the initial cut of about half the projects. You know, the MSBA does a very thorough job, as they should, of vetting all these different statements of interest. And, you know, it's not only those 30 or so statements that are left. You know, some of them are, will be doing studies. Some of them were studied last year and were not selected, but they're still, you know, the, the community put them forward again. And, you know, the, the analogy that I would use is the MSBA is looking at this like a jigsaw puzzle. They're going to look at what their budget is for the next round and they're going to piece together a variety of projects they believe are the most important to support. And what our hope is that the Shrewsbury High School expansion project is a piece of the puzzle that fits. Because they're, they will do, you know, if you look at last year's projects, they had a few very large high schools that were part of that. Brockton High School is one of them, I believe, that, that take up a substantial amount of that budget. A previous year, there were a lot of elementary projects that were smaller and not as many big high school or big middle school projects. So it really depends, you know, they, they assess newly every year and look at everything with a fresh set of eyes, look at what their budget is. You know, potentially helpful is that the legislature did provide, provide the MSBA with some additional funding in this year's fiscal budget for the state, knowing that construction costs had, had been rising. And so that, you know, could affect how many projects they could support in addition to their budget, which essentially comes from some allocation from legislature, but also one penny, which, one penny of the sales tax goes towards funding MSBA projects. So we'll update folks, you know, we, we know that they'll do a thorough job when they come out in October and meet with us and tour the facility. And then, you know, we'll, we'll know, hopefully in January, we'll get good news that they'll move forward to the next phase. But it remains to be seen whether we'll, we'll fit into their puzzle for this year.
Ms. Bres, I guess we've all come before you move to the, the elementary level. Just, I mean, I think it's really exciting. And for those maybe who aren't as familiar as you are, Mr. Girardi, with, with MSBA, right? Having them fund, you know, 30 to 40% of a building is a huge amount of burden off of Massachusetts local taxpayers. And, and that doesn't mean that we don't have to own some of this, some of the cost here, but it's just so important. And I want to really appreciate that the, in the state's most recent budget, that they raised the MSBA budget because they knew inflationary costs were going up for some of our town meeting members knew we, the Oak Window Project, for instance, right, was put out to bid. And then the inflationary costs and what changed in the market were just so dramatic over the last couple of years that, that went up pretty substantially. They added money just for those kinds of projects. And so at the state level, we're seeing the interest in really supporting our school buildings. So across my fingers, I hope your October meeting goes well and that we keep in this, keep in this pipeline because it really is such an important way for us to make some really needed investments. So I'm, I'm just feeling both very appreciative and, and I'll, I'll keep my fingers crossed for the next, next few months. But I just wanted to make sure people were sort of aware that the state has made some important investments, I think, to the, in the, in this area.
Absolutely. The next piece that we want to bring forward, just as an update, is the, moving forward with the pre-K through grade four capital planning study committee. And there are two goals for this committee that we articulated last spring. One is to create a transparent process to discuss the future direction of the kind of capital investments we want to make in our preschool and elementary school buildings. And part of that is to review the study that LPA provided last spring. And they provided not only an assessment of the current state of all of our buildings, pre-K through 12, but also a variety of, of options that the, they suggested that we look at going forward for capital investment and, and a variety of different ways that might be accomplished, particularly at our pre-K to four. A variety of those pieces, but because the pre-K to four has, you know, different permutations of ways we could approach it, the, the school committee suggested, and I also concurred that in having some, doing some work this year to really look at, given that we were moving forward, the, the high school expansion project as, as the number one priority, right behind it, you know, the, the, the study the LPA did indicated that the preschool, the age of the Coolidge Building, looking at enrollment over time, pre-K through four, was, that was really the second priority to look at. And this is a good process for us to take to move forward, we believe. And so, so that this study committee could then make recommendations to the school committee and the select board around what a preferred pathway using some combination of those options might be. So we are in the, the process right now of forming the study committee and we'll list off those, those roles in a moment. This fall and winter, the idea is to review the, the study that was provided, which is very substantial, and discuss those options and, and that are put forward and then, you know, create some recommendations and then present those in March of 2024 to this school committee. The team itself will be two members of the school committee, and I understand that Ms. Fritz and Ms. Boucher will be serving in that role. We received news that Mr. Samia and Ms. Flynn from the select board will be participating. The members representing the town manager's office will be Keith Baldinger, the Assistant Town Manager for Operations, previously Public Division's Head and Assistant DPW Director. And Mr. Toddle, who was here earlier, will be representing the Public Buildings Division. I will be serving on the study committee, as will Mr. Girardi. Each of our principals from the five elementary schools, as well as our preschool director, will be members of the, of the study committee as well. We've put an invitation out so that we can hopefully have one staff member from each of our elementary schools and preschool and then put out an invitation. Ms. Fritz invited parents, and I know there's been a number of parents who have submitted. We asked that, the deadline is this Friday to submit interest and we're looking to have one parent representative. That served us very well during the redistricting process and we think that will be good to make sure each of the schools has a voice. And then depending on the topic, other members of the central office team, whether that's Ms. Belcito or Ms. Clouder, may participate in different ways over the course of the, of the committee's work. I am also very pleased to let the committee know, I had mentioned this at our workshop and, and you were very supportive. We are in the process of finalizing an arrangement with the Collins Center for Public Management through UMass Boston to provide some facilitation for this project, which will both enable, free up some resources for myself and Mr. Girardi in particular, which we appreciate in terms of time. And at the same time, bring, you know, a third party's eye to, and we're, we're looking for someone, it looks like we'll be able to get a consultant who is very familiar with the MSBA process, what the MSBA looks at in terms of projects down in the future. So more news to come on that once we finalize that, but that's looking very promising for us as well. So, you know, over the course of the next few months, you know, we'll form the team. The first meeting in September, Sean Brennan from LPA will present an overview of the report that they did to familiarize people with it. In October, we'll meet at the end of October and look at the October 1st enrollment numbers and see how those compare to the projections we had and if we need to revise those at all. Over November and December, we'll look at issues such as, you know, school sizes and, you know, for future projects, you know, larger projects like Beal, neighborhood elementary schools, what that looks like for potential future work around capital in, in that portfolio. In January, after looking at all these various issues, the, the committee will look at what we think the right pathway forward for Shrewsbury could be. The idea is in February to take those ideas and come up with a consensus, hopefully that then can be reported formally as a set of recommendations to the school committee by March of, of 2024. So very pleased that we're moving forward as, as planned. And at this time, we'd be happy to take any other questions, either about the high school statement of interest or the pre-K through grade four capital planning process.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, John?
Yeah, first off, I think the high school advancing and the MSBA process is very exciting news. Having been a parent of a high schooler for the last eight years with two students, you know, we've, you know, we've, we've been very transparent about, you know, the space challenges within the high school. I've seen it firsthand. I think we, you know, our staff and administration is always doing more with less space. And it is amazing to see how they do it, but I think we're at a point now where, you know, we need to look forward. And, and this is, this is great news and, you know, I'm excited to see it advancing. And I also think we've seen, you know, obviously recent successes with Beal through the MSBA program. So, you know, I'm, I'm excited to see what's next. In terms of the pre-K and elementary, you know, study committee, I think that is also a very important, you know, forward-thinking committee that is going to have to answer a lot of questions for us and to understand what the future of, of pre-K and elementary education looks like. Because we're not one to just kind of sit and just kind of wait for things to happen. I think we're always looking, we're always a forward-looking district and this is going to require collaborative effort across key stakeholders, not just school committee, but select board and, you know, staff and, and, and parents and certainly, you know, school and town administration. So excited to see that project get off the ground as well. So, thank you.
And I think that SOI moving forward and having them come in in October is a testament to the community and what we've done with the MSBA already. And as Dr. Sawyer said, I mean, they're very strict, so they know how we work, how we move our projects forward. So I think that's a kind of a feather in our cap. Fingers crossed that it keeps going forward. And thank Ms. Heffernan because I think it was you who mentioned the study committee for the pre-K through four. And I agree, I think it's a really planful way to go about capital planning. They're not inexpensive, looking at new buildings or additions to buildings. So we're making sure we're, we're being transparent, we're getting information and we're moving it forward through the community in a way that's mindful of all of the components that go in. So thank you for this report. Anything else, Dr. Sawyer, on this?
No, again, we're excited about the process and we'll look forward to future updates.
Thank you. Okay, next we're going to move on to the fiscal year 24 federal grants report. Federal and state entitlement grants are definitely an important part of funding for school operations. And Mr. Girardi will provide us with an update of this year's current grant funding.
Thank you. I think this presentation, it's a recommendation of school committee to accept the FY24 state and federal entitlement grants. Entitlement grants are non-competitive grants awarded automatically on the basis of defined formulas that differ, differ by grant. This report shows that we're receiving this year an expected $3.2 million in federal and state grants. Throughout the process, I'm recommending to school committee to vote, to vote, to accept the funds. Couple of highlights here. First, as we're coming out of the COVID times, the ESER grants are starting to age out. ESER 1, did, we expended those funds before the deadline of September of 2022. ESER 2, the deadline to expend those funds is this September of '23. And just as of note, those funds have been expensed. So that, that grant is closed out. And then we are on track, ESER 3, those funds need to be expensed by September of 2024. Those, those, those dollars have been accounted for and we are on track to be fully expensed in ESER 3. Just wanted to bring that to point because, you know, that is a conversation that's happening at state and federal levels around school districts, some who are not using, using those funds. And then a second piece, and I think a piece that does kind of pad the numbers to our grants here are the two homeless grants that are included in there, which total, again, as Dr. Sawyer said earlier, about, you know, close to a million dollars, just shy of a million dollars. And again, I think it's an important piece to share when we're talking about grants, that those monies really are dedicated to some specific uses. So even though the total number is, is higher than, than last year, those numbers really are dedicated to supporting a very specific group of, of students. So having said that, I'll take any questions that you have on, on grants and.
Ms. Heffernan?
Yeah, can you say a little bit more about the special education entitlement grant? It looks like it went up about, call it $110,000 a year. Is that because of, as it is an entitlement grant, is that because either the state changed the formula or the number of students we have grew? Because it seemed pretty consistent for the last few years and so do we know?
Are you talking about the 240?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
So again, yes, that, that is a formula through the federal government that really does take into account total population.
Okay.
And then students who are of, of lower income and special education needs. So that formula as it pairs out. And Joe, if you can, you know, I think it's a year lag based on the enrollments that, that are received in the previous year.
Certainly worth noting, we appreciate those homeless dollars coming in on a quarterly basis versus a year behind our spending. It's good to just know that's a demographic shift, not necessarily a decision to allocate more, more.
I, I'm not an expert on all the ins and outs of that formula and, you know, there, there are some years where not only the demographic changes, but they may just allocate a little bit more for different elements of it. That's kind of a moving target. It typically goes up. It's pretty stable, but over time it tends to grow a little bit each year. And, you know, until we get the, the formula for that year, we really don't know what it's going to be, basically. And then we work through it sometimes. We're, and we're usually pretty conservative and just presume level funding.
Right.
And then if it comes out to be a little bit more, we know we have some room to work with making some additional investments perhaps.
Thank you very much.
Along that, is it similar for the Title I grant? Because that's gone up a little. Is it same based on demographics?
That, that is a, yeah, that's a pretty clear demographic, demographic based on low-income students in, in the community.
Anyone else have any questions or comments?
So to speak more to that, some schools are dedicated as Title I schools. And it's a percentage of those students in that district that are of, of, meet the criteria of low income. And then so certain schools in town are considered Title I schools and other or not. But we, we benefit from the resources that the Title I money brings to us.
Thank you. Nothing else? Anything further on this, Dr. Sawyer, or? Okay, so we do need to vote on this as well. I may have a motion to accept all FY24 grant funds noted in the enclosed chart and use such funds for their intended purpose.
So moved? Second?
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, Dr. Sawyer will be providing an update on the annual bullying statistics report.
Thank you. And, and this is a routine report, pardon me, that we provide every year at the start of the school year based on the previous year's statistics per school committee policy. The overall caveat that I always try to give is that this is based on the, the state law relative to bullying. It's a very specific legal definition of what bullying is, which is sort of the key element, is that these are not only behaviors that are perceived to cause either physical or emotional harm, but it must be repeated. That's the legal definition of bullying. We certainly, you know, as every school district in the nation, we have students who make mistakes and behave in ways we would prefer that they not and, you know, can be unkind or, or, you know, do things that are harmful to other students. Excuse me, most often, those are one-off situations. So, you know, if there's a situation where there's a fight between two students or a student who has called another student a really awful name, we will, you know, certainly deal with those and we take them seriously. Those would not show up in this report anywhere unless perhaps a student brought that forward or a student's parent brought that forward and, and made an allegation that the student was being bullied. In which case we do an investigation and, and look carefully at the situation, confirm whether it is something that is, you know, meets the definition. And if it's, you know, some really behavior that is not okay, but it wasn't repeated, that might show up in this report as an allegation, but that was not supported as, you know, being actually qualifying as bullying. Doesn't mean it wasn't dealt with seriously. It doesn't mean that we weren't, you know, making, doing all, all we could to make sure students learned from that mistake and that the student who was the, the target is protected. But these, again, the ones that qualify are those where something was happening repeatedly, whether that's something that was addressed and then happened again, or by the time the, the, the school personnel find out about it, it already has happened multiple times by the time that the educators or administrators become aware. So that's just the key piece here in terms of what, what qualifies as bullying and what doesn't. You know, in terms of the numbers of actual situations that qualified as bullying, it remains quite low. Out of a student, you know, a student population of, you know, almost 5,900 students over last year, we had 10 situations qualify as bullying out of 38 allegations. From those, there were 19 different students who were considered to be aggressors who were causing the bullying and 10 students who were targets. You can see the breakdown there by level. There were five allegations at the elementary level, two which qualified as bullying, two aggressors and two targets. At the middle level, there were 13 allegations, only one qualified as bullying, one aggressor and one target. And at the high school level, there were 20 allegations, seven qualified as bullying. There there were 16 aggressors and seven targets, which obviously suggests there were situations or makes it clear there were situations where there were multiple aggressors and with one particular student being the target. You know, comparison to the previous year, we had a, maybe the lowest we'd ever had in terms of number of qualified as bullying in '21, '22, which were four. So, you know, there were a num, a, a larger. So, you know, there were a num, a, a larger number, there were thirty-eight allegations last year, created twenty-six the year before. You know, again, we're, in the grand scheme of things, we're talking about small numbers, so I don't want to overinterpret, you know, exactly how many we have year to year. What's most important to me is that when they come to our attention, that they're addressed, taken seriously, followed through on, plans are made to make sure that we're protecting a student who may be the target of, of someone who is, is bullying them. Or if it's not repeated, it's still addressed, even if it's a one-off kind of situation. Also in your report, you see there's a, you know, we track what types of situations they are. Some of these can, situations might actually be in, you know, have multiple ways in which they occurred, verbal, physical, cyberbullying, whether they occurred at school, outside of school, or both. And you can see the numbers there in terms of, you know, what that looked like, and the majority of them being verbal and at-school situations that, that were dealt with. And then finally, a couple more things, you know, we do look at and track internally the race and ethnicity of the students involved, just like with MCAS reporting, we have such a small number of students, we don't publish that information just because sometimes there are people who are aware of different situations and we don't want to unintentionally identify anyone. In terms of the, again, it's a small sample size, but it's something that we do pay attention to, and of course, we're required to report to the state this information, as well as reporting, you know, some of the consequences in some of these situations may have been suspensions from school. All of our suspensions, whether in school or out of school, are, are reported to the state each year, and their, the state tracks them by various student characteristic. And if we were disproportional in the way that that was happening, we would be, the, the state would be identifying that. They have not identified that with us around that issue ever since they started tracking that, and that's something, again, we, we look at internally, and we're, we're doing some work this fall around, you know, as we look at what our statistics were last year and, and, you know, again, with the new state law around suspensions that went into effect last about November of last year, I think, you know, we're required to look at alternatives to suspension as potential ways to deal with student behavior that's, that's inappropriate. And which, again, we have ongoing work that we do. I, I would say that while the number of technically qualifying bullying cases went up a little bit, overall, the perspective from our administrators was that last year was a better year than the year prior in terms of overall student behavior. You may recall that the year we sort of came back after COVID, full in-person school, we had a lot of difficulties with students, especially students who, you know, we, we believe because of lack of socialization over a year and a half, you know, had a really hard time in school, and, and this is not unique to Shrewsbury at all, there's myriad articles about this, been published the last couple of years. I think the sense was that students were more typical last year in terms of their social behavior and their behavior towards each other, not back to what we would say pre-COVID, but overall, it was a better situation. But again, this, the statistics here are specifically for the allegations in those that qualified for bullying. And then the last piece I'll make that's in your report, and just remind folks watching that at the top of every one of our webpages on our school website, any of our schools' website, is a flag that says, "Submit a school safety tip." That is, obviously, anyone can contact my office, any principal's office, if they have concerns about something happening at school or outside of school that's affecting a student. If you want to submit something anonymously, you can use that school safety tip link on our website. We get a handful of those each year, and, you know, of course, we always check them out to see if there's anything validity to them, and, you know, occasionally, we are made aware of situations otherwise we wouldn't have known about. So that is another avenue. It, you know, certainly to see something, say something applies here as well. If someone feels that something's happening that is compromising the safety or well-being of any of our students, we want to know about it, because if, because we don't always know. And it's hard to know sometimes, things that are happening online outside of school or, or even happening under the radar, and that's something we want to do whatever we can when we're made aware of something, to take it seriously, investigate it, and then deal with it as fairly and appropriately as we can. So that is the information I have for you this evening, and I'd be happy to have, answer any questions the committee might have.
Any questions or comments?
No, thank you.
I do have one question. When we talked about the alternatives to suspension, because behaviors have consequences, we, you know, as parents, we, something we do, and what do, what are, what are some examples that we're doing now? And I read some about school districts this summer, what they were doing.
Sure.
So what, what are we doing that way?
Yeah, I mean, there, there's a variety of things, and the, the, the legislation gives a, a variety of potential pathways school districts could use, whether that's restorative justice approaches where, you know, students would be sort of a natural consequence of trying to restore either the relationship with the student who was harmed, or if there were something, I think a simple version of that would be if a student did, you know, or were to have been caught writing, you know, graffiti, it might be, you know, doing some work to clean up the school or assist the custodian, and, you know, sort of natural consequences. There, there could be various elements of counseling that could be tried or, or, you know, peer, what's, what's the word I'm looking for? I'm blanking on it, but it's a peer mediation.
Okay.
Kinds of situations. So, you know, the expectation, there is still, you know, the, the ability for a school administrator to use their judgment that if something is, is, you know, egregious enough, that it's creating the potential either, you know, jeopardy of someone in the school community or is really significant, that they can move right to a suspension situation. But essentially, you know, the legislation says you need to try some other things before you move to removing a student from the school and, and from their, what, what is in Massachusetts, very clearly a constitutional right to public education. So, you know, we've always been, you know, our, the number of suspensions we have in the district has always been relatively small percent, on a percentage basis, given the size of our student body. But, you know, it behooves us, because of this new legislation, to look at, you know, are there some alternatives we could employ instead of suspension around different kinds of behaviors? You know, another potential example would be, you know, a student's caught vaping. You know, is that something where, before we suspend them from school, you know, potentially a diversionary program or an educational program or something that is, you know, required of the student to do, that hopefully stops the behavior? Obviously, the goal is to stop the behavior, but it's also to make sure we have a school environment that's safe and protects all of our students to the greatest extent we can. So it's nuanced, it's not easy. I think our administrators do an excellent job of, of first and foremost, trying to build relationships with kids so that when there are difficulties, they have the relationship to draw on. But, you know, these can be very difficult and, and, you know, nuanced situations to resolve, and I think being judicious is, is what we try to do, and we're going to keep trying to get better at that.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Ms. Fritz, if I, if I can, and given my, my background, I have some, I really appreciate what the state is trying to do, and I don't know that everybody always appreciates what they're, what they're trying to do. There's been reform in the juvenile justice setting about sort of moving kids into that pathway, and now on the, on the education front, about how do we turn what are, without a doubt, problematic behaviors into teachable moments, right? And to have, to think about empathy and building, and there's an awful lot of research behind it. I don't, I don't want to in any way understate that for an administrator on the front lines, this can be challenging to, to be nimble and kind of have to change the way we've been, we've been doing business, but to think about how do you build empathy in a, in a young person who's done some harm? And how do we do that? And that we know, what we know about adolescent brain development is, got a lot of learning left to do, and thinking about others isn't always right at the forefront. And so, you know, I know, I know that's hard for our staff to kind of think about new ways and trying to be creative and who have no more time in the day. So I want to acknowledge that, but, you know, certainly you see some stuff in the, in the social media or like, you know, we're all just being light on kids and we don't care anymore. And I think it's, I think we've just been evolving as we, as we go along about what's problematic behavior and what's the best way to respond to it writ large, just like, you know, we don't want to be one of those communities where this is a bullying report, but we see all these, you know, terrible examples around our sport programs that kind of get really far and extreme about how, you know, that, how, how kids are getting treated, and so how do we have a better culture across the board? So I really appreciate your asking the question, though, because I don't, I don't think there's probably quite enough education about what was behind that. And, and certainly, you know, the, I did it, I got suspended, and having worked in the juvenile justice system, I'll tell you, kids who get suspended love a good vacation. And like, what did they learn from that, right? And so it's, we need it at times, but I, I think there's a, there's a lot of good reasons to think about a different direction.
Well, thank you for the report.
Could I just mention one thing?
Sure.
I know Ms. Heffernan mentioned about athletics programs, and I do want to commend Mr. Costa, the director of athletics, that at the mandatory athlete parent night for the fall season, actually had a guest speaker who has presented nationally in a variety of venues, schools across the country, around bullying, particularly around athletes and around that dynamic, and was very pointed in his message to the student athletes and the families that were present. And I was there as a parent that evening around, you know, issues around cyberbullying and, you know, expectations that the school community has and, and sort of the, the consequences of making poor decisions, which, you know, I thought was well-received by those I, I spoke to afterwards. So again, we're trying to take opportunities wherever we can to help set expectations, teach kids a skill set to try to avoid and, and these kinds of behaviors and, and not tolerate them as bystanders. And ultimately, you know, we have a very strong school culture and climate overall, but we definitely have room to improve, and that's something we have to keep focusing on. So I appreciate the commentary.
Great, thank you. Okay, next, we have our minutes from our workshop that was held on August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Are there any changes or corrections?
No.
There being none, they can be accepted as distributed. We do not need to go into executive session this evening, so if there's nothing further, I'll accept a motion to adjourn for the evening.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote is required. Ms. Reepor?
Yep.
Mr. Wensky?
Aye.
Ms. Boucher?
Aye.
Ms. Heffernan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Thank you and good night.